Okay. I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. The approval of the closed session agenda, a motion is in order, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zaragapour.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Yeah, it's...oh, there we go. Got it.
The vote is seven yes, one absent Ralston. Motion passes.
Great. Motion passes. Next, the motion to enter closed session.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zaragapour.
I move that pursuant to the Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons: One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific employees under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, including payment of costs associated with the transition visits of the new superintendent; Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code Section 2.23711A2 and 8; Three, to receive information and discuss with division counsel and staff actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving specific staff and students under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 and 8; and Four, to consult with legal counsel regarding the impact of specific legislation under Virginia Code Section 2.2-37118.
Do you have a second? Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent Ralston.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately one hour. Thank you.
The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. Moving on to closed session certification, a motion is in order.
Madam Chairwoman.
Ms. Williams.
Sorry. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting February 3rd, hmm, April 21st be certified by adopting the following resolution: Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Wall. Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? All right, now we vote.
The vote is six yes, one absent Ralston, and one not present at vote. Dr. Latif, motion passes.
Fantastic. Moving on to closed session action items, a motion is in order.
Madam Chairwoman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chairman.
Ms. Wall?
I second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
The vote is six yes, one absent Ralston, and one not present at vote. Dr. Latif? Motion passes.
All right, we, um, let's see, we are on 8.02. I need a motion. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the religious exemption from compulsory school attendance for students RE 20-27 and RE-28.
Do we have a second?
Madam Chairman, I second.
Madam Chair.
Oh, oh, sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I second.
Ms. Lily Jesse seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's vote.
The vote is six yes, one absent Ralston, and one not present at vote. Dr. Latif, motion passes.
Moving on to 8.03, I need a motion. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the payment of costs associated with the transition visits for the new superintendent and authorize the chairman-at-large to execute a letter of agreement to that effect.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chairwoman. I second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's vote.
The vote is six yes, one absent Ralston, and one not present at vote. Dr. Latif, motion passes.
All right, I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. The purpose of the meeting, this meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to the House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. I see that we've got students out here in the audience. Would any of you like to lead the pledge this evening? Seeing it. Yes, please rise for the pledge. I'd love it if a student would...
And then when you're done, tell them your name, what school you go to, or if you're...
I haven't done it in so long, I hope I didn't do it.
Just getting started.
Okay. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. My name is Nia Brooks, and I am a graduating senior from Brentsville District High School.
Thank you. All right. Yes. Oh, moving on to approval of the...I was looking for the part. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's vote.
The vote is six yes, one absent Ralston, and one not present at vote. Dr. Latif, motion passes.
Moving on, we need adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's vote.
The vote is six yes, one absent Ralston, and one not present at vote. Dr. Latif, motion passes.
All right, moving on. Ordinarily, we'd have citizen comments, but no one signed up to speak this evening, so we will continue on with the student representatives. And just before we begin, where is...here we go. We have members of the Student Senate attending tonight's meeting. We have Nia Brooks. Did I say your name correctly, Nia?
Yes, ma'am.
Nia, Nia from Brentsville. You will be attending the University of Utah?
Yes.
Congratulations. We have Trent Fisher from Independence Non-Tрадitional School.
Oh, he's not here.
Oh, he's not here. Oh, he's got, he's going to JMU though. Woo, all right. Is it Sorrell?
Sorrell.
Sorrell Greer from Garfield High School. Congratulations on being a Jefferson Scholar finalist for UVA. Yeah. Samin Hanan from Osborne Park High School. I can't see you from behind there. There you go, from behind the podium. You're headed off to Virginia Tech. Congratulations. We have Samir Herrera from Freedom High School with us this evening.
Oh, he's not here.
Oh, he's not here? I'm so sorry. You could have said they were hiding behind the podium, I wouldn't see them. And Aisha Khan from Woodbridge High School. And Aisha, you've got acceptances to Harvard, Stanford, Princeton, Yale, Dartmouth, and UPenn?
Yeah.
You've got some decisions to make. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Outstanding. So... Ben, oh, yes, Ben, I'm so sorry, you're hiding up here. And Ben is our representative from Unity Read. Ben, what do you have for us this evening?
Not a whole lot tonight, but thanks for all those introductions. These guys are great. So yeah, this is students' centers, but so last week, and it's just an update, Diversity and Inclusion Committee, they had this, their final meeting of the year. Been a really productive year and good year for them. So they invited a bunch of college students from cultural clubs, so I, you know, me and all the participants got to learn about, you know, what a cultural club is like in college. People asked a lot of great questions, and they told us about kind of what it was like, process of going through things. It was very informative. It was very good, I think, overall. I don't really have any comments on the items, really. One thing I did have to say was that, you know, some people are going, I know some elementary and high schoolers going in four days a week in person, so that's really nice for those who I know who are doing it. So that's one thing that's great. Hopefully, I can see it's fourth quarter and then you're on a high note with that. So we're in the fourth quarter. I know seniorice for me is hitting, but students out there, push it, you can do it. Got some really good news with the graduation dates. I'm like super thankful, legitimately. I think everyone's like very excited for that, and it'd be like really awesome if you guys could come. Guys are busy, but like, I think students will love that. So yeah, graduation is gonna be awesome, and it's some of the best news I've heard all year. Finals, so word around town is that it's gonna be optional and like it can only help kids' grades like last year, but I think students need a little more clarification on that for anyone, but that should be coming out soon, so I appreciate that. Lastly, you know, I was appointed by you guys to serve on the Superintendent Advisory Council on Sustainability, so in June, we're cooking out this really nice presentation for you guys, some nice recommendations, I think you guys are gonna love it. They're awesome, I promise, so look forward to that. I owe my time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Moving on to superintendent's time, Dr. Waltz.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. In an effort to provide an equitable education to all of our students, PWCS is offering a variety of academic and enrichment programs for students at all grade levels this summer. All summer school program students will participate in person and five days a week. A virtual option is available for most academic programs. Families of kindergarten through eighth-grade students will be contacted by their schools directly about offerings and qualifications for summer school. High school students should speak with their counselors about options for enrichment and earning credit over the summer. All kindergarten through 12th grade academic programs offer tuition assistance. Contact your child's school for further information. Look for additional information from your child's school regarding school-based opportunities for summer learning and enrichment. For more information, visit the summer school webpage at www.pwcs.edu. Congratulations to Sahas Gauda, a junior at Battlefield High School, student I actually know pretty well, for winning first place at the Lincoln Douglas Debate Championship, an annual competition coordinated by the Washington Arlington Catholic Forensics League. He debated both sides of the topic, and this is the topic, "Resolved: The United States Ought to Guarantee Universal Child Care," in quote, and earned his champion title, competing against the top debaters in the DC, Maryland, and Virginia area. It is great to see that even during a pandemic, our students continue to participate in meaningful activities. The pandemic did not stop the Virginia State Science and Engineering Fair from being held this year. Congratulations to the following first-place winners: Tony Bright, Hamza Latif, son of our chair, Gabriel Ralston, all from Colgan. They each earned first place in the biomedical and health sciences category. Von Dara Rhimes and De Lopez from Forest Park High School, Jason De La Vega from Osborne Park High School, and Trevor White from Battlefield High School, who also attend the governor's school at Innovation Park, earned first place in the embedded systems category. Naaman Argarwal, a student at Patriot High School, earned first place in the plant sciences category. So to see the full list of honors earned by our students, again, go to www.pwcs.edu. So we should be very proud of those major accomplishments. That's pretty amazing. As mentioned during the last school board meeting this month, PWCS has been partnering with Novant UVA and Prince William Health District to support the effort to vaccinate our students 16 years and older. This past weekend, an additional 2,000 vaccines were offered to our students. We appreciate these partnerships, and they provided us with the opportunities to vaccinate our staff and now our students during the pandemic, and we will continue to communicate opportunities for vaccinations into the future. Because of the pandemic, Virginia Code and the authority granted by the General Assembly has permitted our school board agenda topics, but they have to be limited. Because of the limitation, we have temporarily suspended board recognition and approval of many proclamations that honor various observances. However, I do think it's important to mention at least a few of these observances. Today is Administrative Professionals Day, and I appreciate the many administrative professionals across our school division. I have two of them who work for me, Cindy and Sabrina, and the board has two who are sitting right over there, Bea and Brandy, and I appreciate the many administrative professionals across our school division who provide exceptional customer service to our students, staff, parents, and community. This week is also Earth Week, and our outstanding staff in the Energy and Sustainability Office have put together several suggested activities for students to participate to celebrate our earth. April is also Month of the Military Child, and that's why a number of us are wearing purple tonight. I see several board members wearing some purple as well, and I know many of our school employees are recognizing our military-connected students. I would also like to mention that Dr. Deborah Ransom, Supervisor of Elementary Counseling and Related Services, who oversees our support for military children, is retiring at the end of the school year. We thank Dr. Ransom for her 14 years of service to PWCS. Congratulations. Advancing your educational knowledge does not end during a pandemic. I would like to congratulate our new superintendent, Dr. Latonya McDade, on earning her doctorate degree earlier this month. Jarsyllen Hart, Associate Superintendent for Western Elementary Schools, also completed studies for her doctorate. And so congratulations to Dr. McDade and to Dr. Hart. Before I close, I'm just gonna go off script about a couple of things, and I'll be very I had an opportunity to go to a lecture from a former professor at Brown University regarding the founding, the people who worked on the American Revolution and the people who are helping to accurately present what the accomplishments and the impact on the creation of our country. And one thing that he talked about, he cited the Gettysburg Address, and, you know, some of us had to memorize that, and it talked about our forefathers did this, and so on and so forth in that speech. And one of the questions and one of the things that in government classes often needs to be a little bit explained is, who were these supposed fathers? Whereas many people consider them the founding fathers, that's not necessarily accurate. And what some believe is that the fathers, were all the fathers who have worked in all of the wars, who not only a part of the American Revolution, but who have fought battles going forward. And there are those battles that involve, you know, fighting other countries and war with machinery and all of that kind of thing, and then there are also other kinds of battles. And I think what we're seeing in our country is something that we can't just slide by and not call out. And I just have to say that from my personal point of view, I think we will have really achieved some of what is yet to be accomplished in this country when everybody is morally outraged by some of the horrific things that have taken place in this country. And certainly, justice for George Floyd. George Floyd will never be back, but his memory will live on, and certainly, I think it's a step in the right direction. We have a long way to go, and I think it's important that we continue to talk about these things. We're encouraging teachers to allow conversations in classrooms and to be respectful of people's different points of view. But as the lead education person in the school division, I just want to say that it is my belief that regardless of people's personal beliefs, and I have said this to teachers and administrators on a number of occasions, our job is to ensure the safe and secure education and a quality education for every single child who goes to this school division, regardless of their race, their creed, their religion, their background, their sexuality. It is our job for school to be a safe and secure place to go and get a world-class education. So again, you know, normally I don't deviate like that, but I just, I follow the news, and I usually watch about four cycles of news every day. I didn't always do that, but when the pandemic hit, I, it helped me quite a bit to be aware of what different news cycles were saying, and certainly, we've had a lot more than the war on the pandemic this past year. So with that, I will end by saying I had a wonderful opportunity to meet with the new superintendent, who starts July 1, Dr. Latonya McDade. At her request, I met with her face-to-face for over two hours. She has also reached out to me since that opportunity this past week. I found her to be very engaging, highly intelligent, academically, on top of what needs to happen in public education, concerned about the education of all students, wanting to learn about how things are done in Prince William, respectful of the students and their accomplishments, the teachers and the administration and the board. So I have pledged to her any assistance that I can give her, and I told her when she asked me, what do you think is the greatest strength of Prince William County? I said, the students, and secondly, the staff, because I think we have a community in Prince William and in our schools, once you get nestled in your elementary school and your middle and your high school, there's a great sense of community where you don't feel like you're in a mega school division, which we are. Out of 16,000 school systems, we're the 35th largest, but hopefully, in your school and in your niche, as you go through your community schools, you will feel connected and a part of a family, which is outside of your own immediate family. So again, very encouraged with my two opportunities with Dr. McDade, and she is ecstatic about being selected to come here. So my final comment with all of this is, all of the improvements that we have made, whether it be equity, whether it's hiring superintendents, whether it's trying to have a budget that improves the opportunity for students, that cannot be accomplished without the school board. The school board has to vote on all of those things, whether it's who's gonna be the superintendent or what's gonna be in the budget for our students and staff. So I hope that you, as a board, are also feeling good about many of the accomplishments that you've made. I think in this budget, as well as your new superintendent, you know, you've been able to come to these decisions with eight zero votes. I've been doing this for a lot of years, and I don't remember too many things as important as that that have been eight zero votes. So congratulations to the school board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. We are now at board matter, so board members will have three minutes to talk about what interests them, as long as it is agenda items. So who, which, who would like to start? Shall we, ah, we'll start with Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Ms. Zaragapour. Just wanted to give a couple of quick things, as we, Dr. Waltz and military child month, actually, I forgot, wore purple accidentally tonight, so, but it worked out perfectly. So, but definitely want to thank our military families. As many of you know, the Potomac District has, I think, the largest by proportion military students in the county. We also are home to the Quantico Base, the Marine Corps Museum, and I've spent my last five years working with military families, whether to ensure the .5 position for the military coordinator or actually having the opportunity to serve on the Purple Star Committee, which Ashland was the first, or one of the first schools in this county to be recognized as a Purple Star school. So that was a great experience, and I look forward to events resuming hopefully next year in person, so we can do all those great events that were done on Veterans Day and throughout the year with our military communities. Do want to, as we're getting towards the end of the year, I do want to recognize two students in my two schools, one at Forest Park and one at Potomac. Briefly, Emma Stoneberger, she is played field hockey all four years at Forest Park. Her junior year, she made second team. Senior year, she made first team district for defense. She was the captain this year, and she was chosen as Player of the Year for Prince William County by all the Prince William County coaches, so that's really cool. And then in Potomac High School, Marilyn Long, she is also senior, graduating with a 4.47 GPA with ACE, IGCS E-level courses, dual enrollment, member of NHS, yearbook, the Potomac Leadership. But most importantly, during this crazy year, we're talking about identifying gap kids and helping with remediation and such. She helped lead a, basically Panthers Helping Panthers program, where Potomac High School students worked with Potomac Middle School students on literacy and other skills to better support and prepare them during the pandemic. So just wanted to mention that, and thank you so much.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz, for your words on ensuring safe and secure place for all students today. Also want to thank all administrative professionals, specifically Ms. Simpson and Ms. Reeves for all your hard work, and I look forward to next meeting, I believe. We're gonna learn more about what the plans are for the next month. Congratulations to all the students here on your future endeavors. Many congratulations. And I will just wrap it up with, this week is Military Child Spirit Week, and we're all wearing popo to show our support to military-connected children. Popo is chosen because it represents the blending of five branches of our armed forces, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the military-connected students. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to start out by thanking our administrative professionals across the division and especially our board clerks, Bea and Brandy, for all that they do. They are amazing. Really appreciate all of your efforts. We couldn't do our job without you. I also want to give congratulations to the class of 2021. I also want to give congratulations to the class of 2021. You have endured a whole, almost a whole year of pandemic as your senior year, so I'm really proud of you, and I just wanna say congratulations. I know we have an all-Virginia event happening this weekend. I wanna say congratulations to the students who made all of Virginia State Choir Band or Orchestra, and good luck this weekend. I hope you enjoy it. I know it's not what you originally wanted it to be, but if you really put your heart into it and make the best of it, I know that it will still be worth doing, and I know a lot of hard work got you there. Also, wanna congratulate Battlefield's cheerleaders, Class VI State Champions, and the women's cross-country team from Battlefield, Class B Regional Top Team. Fantastic work. I know those are really challenging and difficult competitions, so that's really fantastic. And then just generally, I know we had the debaters and the Lincoln Douglas debaters who competed so well from across the division, and Battlefield, we had some great winners at that level who'll go on to the state events. I also want to encourage, SOL testing is going to begin next week, so to all students, eat well, rest up, and do your best, and don't stress out. It's a lot easier to do well when you're not stressed. I am, I agree with Mr. Kim that graduation is one of the most exciting things that I've heard in a long time. I'm really excited about it, that we're going to be able to have some in-person graduation. I know, again, seniors, it's been a hard year, but we want to celebrate you and your accomplishments, and all of the seniors who have gone through the process of applying for college in this difficult year, congratulations to every single one of you. I would encourage students to, who are willing and able to take advantage of our offer for vaccines to do so. Right now, it's vaccine versus virus, or more specifically, vaccine versus variants, so let's be on the winning team and get that done. So for everybody, we have seven weeks left. Let's not waste a day. Let's finish strong. Let's make it count. Let's continue to learn until the very, the very end. If anybody feels that they would benefit from four days of instruction, please reach out to your child's school. If there is space and staffing availability, then the division is committed to accommodate your needs, because every child matters, of every important, every student's needs are important, and we can help you. I just wanna say thank you to the military families. Thank you for your service to our country. We appreciate you. We recognize your sacrifices. We know it's not easy. You have to move a lot, et cetera, but we thank you. And I am finished.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. The flashes on our screen, it says expired, and I'm like, oh, no. Okay. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. So I just first, obviously, want to acknowledge it is Administrative Professionals Day, so most people who've watched me over the years know that that's one of my favorite days, falling professionally lifelong in some way, shape, or form, near or in that category. And I do believe that, you know, administrators are the ones who are the backbone of every organization. They're the herder of cats and the informer of informations, and generally, the keeper of secrets and bridge builders and all of that good jazz. So thank you personally to Bee and Brandy for all the work that you do for us on the board, and thank you to all of the administrators out there who keep the rest of us on point and on target. Next, I just wanna say, you know, Dr. Walts, I really appreciate personally, not only as a school board member, but personally, as a mother of two children of color and as a person of color myself, the words that you shared this evening, and for creating a space within our school division that allows for that conversation, because it's not only been a year of virus pandemic, but it's been a year of blatant, in-your-face, constant injustice against people of color that has been going on since this country has been in existence, but it's been going on in our face with no escape everywhere you turn this past year. And I think that it's very important, because I remember being a high school student, and those are conversations you couldn't have in class, and a lot of times, that was the only place you really wanted to have them, because you didn't, you know, you were tired of having them at home, and you wanted your friends to be able to understand how you feel, you wanted your teachers to be able to have an understanding of how you feel. I think it's important, because one of the ways that I believe as a nation that we heal is that we have these conversations, so that we can learn from each other, we give space for people to be allowed to feel how they feel and to learn from other, you know, other perspectives. So I really appreciate that, and I think that that is just, for me, that's one of the most memorable things that you've done as a superintendent. There have been so many, 'cause after having a child who graduated, it was the first one in for all-day kindergarten, so I've kinda been around for a while. I just really thank you for that. That's, that's, it's tremendous, and it is, it is true. We're, we are here to provide an education for all students and create a safe space for everybody, students and staff. So thank you for saying that from your position, to make that official. And then also, what Dr. Walts mentioned is, we normally do, as a board, and I think I spoke to this, have all these proclamations for Military Month, and librarians, I had a librarian reach out to me, and I just want everyone to know that we are thinking of those. It's not within our control to make those proclamations and resolutions like we normally do, but I don't want you to feel like we don't think about that, and we wouldn't want to acknowledge you if we could. So everyone is appreciated for all of the work that they do, and I think this year has been specifically really hard on all of us, and will continue next year. To everyone looking forward to a traditional graduation, or as close as we can get, I hope to attend those. I can't say I won't miss the drive-throughs from last year, because they were fantastic, but I hope everyone takes a deep breath, especially our seniors, and enjoys the rest of their time, too.
Ms. Jessie.
Good evening. First of all, I wanna thank the military. My, my husband and I came here years ago, and of course, he was in, was in the Marine Corps, so I know what military-wise and how difficult and challenging it can be. Also, just spent some time with VSBA, the National School Board Association, attended several of those conferences. Everyone seems to be looking through the lens of equity, so it's gonna be very interesting to see what we see on the other side, if we're seeing the same thing. So your comments tonight really reflected our efforts to look through those lens. I'm also on the Virginia Schools, Students in Challenging Schools Committee, and we're looking through the lens also, but we're looking at culturally responsive curriculum and return to school and the effects that this, the pandemic has had on students. I wanna personally thank Rita Goss, who has provided some information for a report that I'm engaged in. She said to me, you can call me at night. I said, really? And she was alert and awake, and I really, Rita, I really appreciate that. The facilities, I'm always in love with facilities. I saw my school in my, my district, which was Woodbridge High School there, Jim, but Diane's not here, but I drove by Garfield. Wow, it looks like a different school. You guys do tremendous work, and I really appreciate you. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jessie. So I'll keep this really short. Dr. Walts, thank you for those comments. I echo Ms. Williams, how she, just thank you. Thank you so much. I know, I know this is, it's important. We've had so many pandemics going on. We've had the health pandemic, we've had Black Lives Matter, we have things that are being said against people of Asian, with Asian background. It's, it's nonstop, and it's really important that we do provide a safe place for our children in our buildings, in our classrooms. Want to also acknowledge the, the folks that help keep the board running here, Ms. Simpson and Ms. Reeves, thank you so much. I love that you answer my questions, and you don't ever get upset with me. And just, I'm gonna get rid of the rest of this time. Remember, we're gonna wear our masks, even though we got vaccines, we still gotta wear our masks. We're gonna wash our hands, keep our distance. If you are not feeling well, stay home. Everyone, please stay safe and healthy. Have a good night. I call this meeting adjourned.